All right, welcome back from the lunch break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our 6.18. Public hearing, consideration of appeal, PL 25-22 AB 2406 of the Planning Commission's approval of major use permit UP 23-05 in initial study IS 23-10 for the Ag Forest Wood Processing Bioenergy project located at 755 East Highway 20, Upper Lake, APN 00401004. Appellant Larry Khan continued from May 20th, 2025. Laura?
Yes, hi. I believe Maria's wanting to continue to July, I believe the last meeting in July.
Okay.
Because we have not heard back from the state yet.
Okay, and then I know we received, Lloyd, did you want to?
So, for your chair and your board's consideration, you may want, even at a request for continuance, you may want to take in testimony, swearing in for potential possible testimony even on this issue.
Okay, all right, yeah, from what I understand it, there's an email that the state needs to get back to, or he's looking into the matter, right, or something like that?
Yes, and so your board may want to check to see if there are any
Right.
potential, may want to be sworn in.
Okay, so Johanna, if you could swear some folks in. If you're here to speak on behalf of this, if you could swear in and raise your right hand, and Johanna will swear you in. Come on up.
All right, okay, and then we have Tara Morris and so I'm raising her hand. Okay, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you.
All right. Maria, did you want to add anything to this?
Yes, thank you. I apologize for my tardiness. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. We'd like to request a continuance of this item to a meeting in the middle of July. We have ongoing communications with the state which directly relate to this item that we'd like to make sure we have enough time to conclude.
Okay, so with that, we have everyone sworn in. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. If anyone would like to discuss the continuance discussion, or please come to the microphone and...
Hi, I'm Barbara Morris, and I would propose that you consider postponing the next meeting or the vote on this until after the Department of Water Resources, the State Department, has contacted the State Controller's Office and the status of this property has been determined. Otherwise, we just keep coming back and doing this, and it's a hardship for people that, you know, would like to attend but work or have children, and as I stated in my letter, for various reasons, it's, you know, and it's added expense for Larry and I to have our lawyer Marcia come every month by Zoom when we're just going to have to keep continuing until the matter of the lease and the conservation easement is settled.
All right.
So please consider postponing this until those matters are clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good afternoon, Tom Lasik. I too support having a continuance instead of a date certain, but a date time certain unless there's some high level of confidence that the information that the county is expecting can come back in time because it does create a hardship for a community that can't afford, you know, paying for this each and every time. So unless there's some confidence that this could be, you know, the decision whether one way or the other can be resolved by July, I would suggest a date and time uncertain if all parties agree. Thank you.
Did you want to add?
The request for a time date certain is based on two criteria. First would be if we went too far out, it would cause an unnecessary, unnecessary delay in hearing this item. Secondarily, to go to a time date certain is helpful to our budget because we don't have to notice it through direct mail and newspaper again.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, I'll open it up to the Zoom.
Hi, my name is Tara Morris. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so we're asking for this continuance to not be rescheduled immediately due to the burden it causes on the community who will be trying to attend these meetings and to all of us who are trying to schedule these meetings. I understand from the emails we've received from our PRA request that the CDD has agreed to fast-track this project, and those are the words exactly from Tom Jordan to Maria Turner, to fast-track this project and move it forward as quickly as possible. But this letter that we received from the Department of Water Resources, I would like to read, that says Pawon, who is the direct, Lake County Director of Department of Water Resources, "Thank you for meeting with us on Monday, June 2nd to discuss the proposed biomass facility and related lease agreement with Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. As you know, DWR reimbursed Lake County for the purchase of parcel APN 00401004, the project site, under the flood corridor program using bond funds. The lease of this property to a private entity is likely not compatible with the bond source language and may create a tax issue. DWR needs to coordinate with the State Controller's Office on this. Given the time of year and the fact that the State Controller's Office is focused on the fiscal year 2026-27 budget, DWR will likely not receive clarification or direction from the State Controller's Office until later this summer. Per the Lake County Board of Supervisors' meeting agenda from May 20th, this item was continued to June 17th, 2025. Given that the State Controller's Office will likely not provide clarification or direction until after this continuation date, DWR will require additional time to research this matter further." And this letter is sent from Elizabeth Bison, a professional engineer who is the manager of the Flood Financial Assistance Section and Division of Flood Planning and Improvement for Department of Water Resources. So based on this letter, it's not clear that the State Controller will have time to have a decision by mid-July. They have other things that they're dealing with, so to push this to mid-July and have everybody show up again and then push it out again doesn't make sense. It's undue burden for everybody. So we're requesting that until the decision has been made as to whether this project site can even be leased and the lease is compatible and that this project is compatible.
If you can wrap up, please.
Consider, yeah, we ask that you consider postponing and not setting a date until, until we have a decision whether this project can even move forward. Thank you.
Marcia, if you can unmute?
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. This is Marcia Birch, and I represent the appellant and some of the other neighbors. I was actually going to draw your attention to the correspondence that Tara Morris just read to you. There is some uncertainty, and unfortunately, the state is sometimes moves relatively slowly, particularly during this time of year when it comes to the State Controller's Office. And it is my view that until the supervisors know whether or not this lease is legal, it's not really productive to continue this meeting repeatedly. I think there needs to be a definitive response from DWR and the State Controller's Office. So I understand that noticing is somewhat of a burden, but it's something that county staff does on a regular basis, and I think a renotice makes sense under these circumstances.
All right, thank you. Is there another person on Zoom? All right, no more hands in Zoom. Is there anyone else that would like to come up to the microphone? All right, I will close public input and bring it back to the board. Maria?
Staff does request a continuance to July 22nd at 10:00 AM.
All right. At 10:00 AM, you said? Supervisor Sabatier?
Sure. Is there a way to make sure the appellant and the applicant know in advance? Maybe if by July 15th it's not there, then it's probably not going to happen so that we don't waste people's time, because we hear it all the time that people do take the time to be here and then told it's continuance. I think those things happen in court, they happen here, it's kind of a quasi-judicial. But is there a way to maybe set a deadline that if we don't have a response, that there would be communication to let the parties know that it will be continued to reduce and mitigate the potential waste of the public's time?
Certainly. There is a two-week or 15-day deadline for turnaround on agenda items. So when it, when we hit the deadline for getting this into Granicus, we'd be happy to notify the appellant and the permitee at that time. Additionally, another thing we could do on the posted agenda, for those who get their notifications through the posted agenda, is to add in parentheses that if a request for a continuance will be presented.
Is there a way to, because they're talking about end of summer. I've heard that statement being made. I don't know if that's the case. Could August, mid-August be a thought, or can we put it out that far, or is that?
It's totally up to the discretion of the board. The goal of setting it in July was to, if, if we received the decision or if we concluded our communications with the state by that time, to not have to wait another month.
I see. Go ahead, Supervisor Owen.
Would perhaps a, putting it, getting it ready for the agenda, but if you do not have the information in time from the state on whether, you know, it's legal or not, could we hold it and not have it put on the agenda before the printing of the agenda?
I appreciate that question. Were the board to, to continue this to a time and date certain, it would have to be on the agenda, but that's why we would notate if a request for continuance was going to be made at that time.
Supervisor Chair and then Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm leaning towards the middle of August. You said there was two reasons why it was problematic to put it out too far, one being, you know, or if it was uncertain, then you have to renotice, but would the middle of August be within reasonable belief that we might get something back from the state? Do you have any thoughts on that?
We do anticipate the reply from the state sometime this summer.
Okay.
But they didn't give us any sort of indication on a month or a date specific. So because typically these projects are grant-funded with their own deadlines, I haven't confirmed with the permitee at this time, but that was the reason for doing a check-in in July, see if we're done and ready then. If not, we could continue to August or two, whenever the board chooses.
Any favor of August?
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just wanted to mention that the question we're asking is a question that was asked three years ago when the lease started in the first place. That's somewhat frustrating to me, and I know that's not on you or your department. I'm just expressing some frustration with lack of knowledge on something that was brought up a while ago. I don't mind a continuation today with the idea of a continuation next time, but I have my limits of how many continuations until, until we're really absolutely wasting people's time. So I think the longer the timeframe, the easier it will be to make sure that that information can be there. I think this is really vital and important information to have before making a decision, but at the same time, too many continuations and it just starts to feel silly.
We do have an opening on August 12th at 9:30, should the board prefer that date.
Supervisor Owen?
I believe the state had mentioned late summer that they should be getting back to us. Is that correct? Am I correct on that? Was that the statement?
I think they said later this summer.
Oh, later this summer.
We tried to glean any sort of meaning out of it, but that's the best I got.
Only because August is midsummer, so we might be putting it...
September 20th is the end.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want to add anything else?
No, just I would say pushing out as far as possible to try to get that, that information in for the convenience of the people.
Go ahead. Well, you said August 12th.
Last week of August?
Last week.
Last week, okay, it is the 26th.
I'm good with that.
9:30.
Okay, August 26th at 9:30. Good with that? All right. You're okay? All right. With that, is there anything else, or do we just, Lloyd?
It would be, it would be a motion for continuing this hearing to a date and time certain.
That would be August 26th at 9:30 AM?
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with the board, I make a motion to continue this public hearing to August 26th at 9:30 AM.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you on August 26th for this continuation. Thank you very much.
Sorry for making my motion into question.
It's okay, it's okay. All right, we're going to go on to item 5.14. Oh, sorry, Susan?
Yes, the sheriff is on his way, but Patrick is here for his item.
7.9?
Yes.
All right, so we got 7.9, consideration of resolution granting authority to waive transient occupancy tax interest and penalties on appeal by an operator. Patrick Sullivan, treasure tax collector.
Thank you, Board. This item is coming back after the meeting last month where we were directed to return with the resolution, offering to continue the right to waive penalties and interest for 30 days past that time. That date would have been June 13th. This was originally on the agenda last week but was pushed forward to today. So at this point, this is the proposed resolution, just indicating that, I mean, the main difference would be there is the right to an informal hearing with the tax collector's office. It's at that point that we would consider the evidence that it's the first-time operator, that the person is cooperating with us, or in this case, cooperated with us through the 13th. If they did that and meet the criteria, we could at that point waive interest and penalties if you approve this resolution. This resolution does indicate that by June 13th, the operator must have completed their registration and have filed any missing tax returns in order to be eligible for the waiver. So I know we didn't get to discuss any specific language before. Does your board have any questions regarding this resolution?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you for bringing this to us after a good conversation last time about how to move forward. Kind of stuck with what we had, so this is making some changes. I know I spoke with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Guintavano. I would like to add a number six at the bottom of the now-there-for, that this resolution, as well as Resolution 2019-118, expires as of, whether that's June 14th or today's date, since we're approving it. I just don't want this to ever live again so that we can do another TOT sweep, and somebody brings this up and says, but, I just, I want to make sure that it
Sunsets?
Sunsets. Right now, it would just continue to exist. I know it has a date of June 13th being last, but it continues to exist, and I would like for it to delete itself. And so I believe that Mr. Guintavano might have some language along with that if the board wishes to pursue.
Did you want to add something first, Pat?
No, I think certainly our office wants to leave zero ambiguity. We want it to be very clear that this is not continuing, so anything that we can do to tighten that up is certainly appreciated.
Lloyd?
So the proposed language for that number six, item number six would be, would state, "This resolution shall remain in effect and be operative until June 13, 2025."
And so what I'll do is, if there's no other comments, I'll open it up to the public and come back for that action. If that's, there's not any other comments. All right. No, and then the chambers? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for that action.
So it would be really just offering, the action would be offering the resolution as amended and with that amended as stated by me.
Okay.
So moved.
All right.
Or offered, the resolution has been offered as proposed.
All right.
As amended.
As amended.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rosmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right, motion carries 500. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
All right, 5.14. Approve purchase of replacement computer equipment from MGT Impact Solutions, Dell and Berkeley Communications, and B, approve budget transfer from the Sheriff Jail Budget 2301 to the Sheriff's Central Dispatch Budget 2202. Sheriff Bingham?
Morning.
Good morning. Afternoon.
Afternoon.
It is after, after. It's been one of those days I had to run a mouth.
Been one of those days, I had to run a mile and a half earlier today. So I believe this was pulled because we, under recommended actions, we did not request the waiving of the purchasing policy as the exemptions, as these were all competitively bid, except for the NetApp, which is a sole-source provider.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Everything else is good.
All right, I will open it up to the public. No hands in Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Wonder if...
Go ahead.
Wonder if Mr. Guintavano might have language to make sure we cover both of those, and I apologize for not having that prepared.
Yes. So it's actually three items, because the third item would then be the approving of the budget transfer. So the first item would be a motion to waive the competitive bidding requirements under, on the basis of Lake County, Lake County Code Section 2-38, the sole source for that, that would count as their cooperative purchases, is that correct? It would be Lake County, on the basis of Lake County Code Section 2-38.4.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then the second, next motion would be to approve purchases of replacement computer equipment from MGT Impact Solutions, Dell and Berkeley Communications. And, oh, sorry, that would be it, it's not authorizing the chair's side, it's not, so that's not part of the motion.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500.
Then the last third item would be a motion to approve budget transfer from Sheriff/Jail Budget 2301 to the Sheriff/Central Dispatch Budget 2202.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you for your time.
All right. All right, next we have our 7.4. That is, consideration of letter of support and authorization to submit Proposition 47 Cohort 5 Grant Application. This is Wendy from probation and Elise Jones from Behavioral Health Services. Wendy Monfran, sorry, I didn't add your last name.
Putting it in front of me. Good afternoon. Sorry, we are seeking your approval in seeking Prop 47 funds to enhance the housing project that was approved last year for justice-involved individuals. It would enhance the case management and supportive services they received, and we also will, are proposing to the grant agency that we implement a workforce development part of that. We have the support of RCHDC, the contracting company, agency, NCO with their build program, all of the executive committee of the Community Corrections Partnership. Who else do we have support from? Lakeport Police? Sheriff, District Attorney, Public Defender. There's more. There's more. There's a lot. So we're seeking $8 million, and we're asking you to support us in that ask.
Go ahead, the vice chair.
Just to clarify, this is the same project that we also put in for that congressional earmark earlier this year.
We did, it's very similar to that.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I like the whole thing, and looking forward to saying yes, I do have one small problem, that I would prefer be more of a gray nebulous area, where if we haven't done an RFP to work specifically with NCO, and I love what NCO does with the build program, I try to go to their graduations, I appreciate everything that they do, but I want to make sure that we, because I've had contracts come before where we're like, well, it was part of the grant, and well, how did we get them in the grant? And so my request of this board is to leave that nebulous and say we're looking for job training and employment readiness services, go through the RFP process with the funds we receive, and I'm sure NCO will have a proposal submitted to us. But that would be my request and preference, to make sure that we follow our RFP processes.
All right. Go ahead.
I don't think that we have a problem with that, we just acknowledge we at least had some community support that could fulfill that need, when we were anticipating what we could do with this kind of money.
All right. There's no other questions, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone on Zoom? Bring it back to the board for action.
Is there a...
Consensus?
Consensus to just delete the with North Coast Opportunities and just leave job training, employment readiness services with local NGO?
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I move to approve this letter of support for Proposition 47 Cohort 5 Grant Application as amended.
I second that.
And then...
And authorize the chair to sign, I felt that, I felt that.
All right, then we have a second still, okay. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For this item, at least under the board memo, there appears to be two other recommended actions for your board that are interrelated, aside from the letter. One is the authorizing, authorizing submission of the grant application, and I believe that same grant application and related documents is also requesting or recommending that the Behavioral Health Director sign the application, any related application documents. So I could walk you, I could walk the board through as far as those two motions?
Yes, please.
So the next motion would be for your board to move to authorize submission of the Proposition 47 Cohort 5 Grant Application by Lake County Behavioral Health Services in partnership with the probation department.
So, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500.
Next motion would be to authorize the Behavioral Health Director to sign the application and any related application documents as required by BSCC.
So, man.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. That concludes this item, 7.4, and now we will move on to 7.5, which is consideration of short-term loan from the General Fund to Behavioral Health Services in the amount of $2 million, Behavioral Health Services Director, Elise Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Board. I want to start out by acknowledging that the department has been able to pay off $2 million of the previous loan that was requested, have not paid off an additional, the remaining $2 million to the county's general fund. So this new loan will allow us to sustain services through a reimbursement gap coupled with our IGT reimbursement flow issues that are felt across the state. Thank you.
All right. Any other, any comments? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I'd like, so I know in the past, we were getting the monthly report or something like that, from basically our Health and Human Services to kind of discuss where we're at with the state, where we're at with the feds. I feel that, I feel between a rock and a hard place. Voting no is ridiculous and just slams the department with the inability to do something that I don't want to see them unable to do. But saying yes without the big picture of who else is gonna need to ask for something similar, and is it a first-come, first-served, or do we have an overall plan on how to deal with some of the things that are coming down the pike? Because this makes me worried, that it's $2 million on top of $2 million, this is a 12-month loan, the other one was a 12-month loan, we've already done some extensions and still remains unpaid. The explanation of the IGT worries me that the payments are slow to come in in order to make it possible to repay. And so I, I don't want to just say yes without a conversation of how do we, can we engage in a deeper conversation of overall medical issues? Because this, to me, is a medical issue, which I just don't even understand the state closing down and not paying between May and August, that is absolutely ridiculous. That is not the way, whether you want to see the government as a business, other people who run businesses that put out medical claims need to continue to get paid. So I just, I, today I will abstain if there's a vote that's forced, but I feel the need for a greater conversation to better understand what are we looking at here? Because I don't want to do first-come, first-served for who wants to get help when help is needed, because I feel there's going to be a lot more hands being raised in the very near future, and I'd love to have a Health and Human Services discourse to really better understand how we're going to plan for this. Because I, I'm nervous about what's planned, with what's proposed.
Supervisor Owen?
When was our four million, was a $4 million loan, was that last year or a year ago?
Yes.
And that was a 12-month loan?
Yes.
And you've paid back half of it?
Yes.
And we need to bring it back to a $4 million?
No, two.
Two and two?
No. Just one, just $2 million, I don't know if Admin's able to help clarify.
Yes, Steven, please.
I meant that you still owe two from the last.
It's one, I think, right? We owe one? Or do you...
No, they owe two.
We were unable to pay off the loan, so we're asking for a new loan of $2 million to cover what we couldn't pay off. It's only $2 million.
I see, okay. That's, so the loan would be a loan on what you already have.
Is that a way to character? So from what I'm hearing is basically, you want to, no extra money from the general fund, just the $2 million to cover what we've already given you.
Yes, that's correct.
I misunderstood it.
Okay. So that would, this one basically is extending the current loan.
Okay, yeah, and I misunderstood the writing.
From what the director is saying.
Yes.
All right, vice chair, do you have?
Well, just my concern, yeah, it's, if, my understanding is that if we didn't do this loan and they ran short of money, the county has to pay for it anyway, and then we're at risk of not getting it paid back potentially. Is that...
That is correct.
Is that correct?
We would do, make every effort to have it paid back, but that is correct.
But there is a, there is that possibility, is if we, because we have to pay the bills, the county does. So that's my concern, if we didn't approve it.
And for other, like, social services or public health, if something like this came up, they have a different, they have more funding that hasn't been ravaged by IGT, so it's, it is possible, but it's not as likely. Don't mind having conversations with them as well.
Yeah.
Supervisor Owen?
I feel better about it, knowing that you already have the money, that we're not taking additional $2 million out of the general fund, because that's the way I was reading it.
No, we're not asking for any more actual cash to come to us.
We're just extending the loan that you currently have.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I think we need to continue, to continue to provide these services, and only address what we've got in front of us today.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a legality question, we have, I don't know if it's a resolution or something for the first loan, we've extended it for it to be paid, I can't ignore the fact that we have kind of like a loan agreement that it will be repaid, and here this is, this talks to a new loan as far as the resolution goes, it doesn't even discuss the prior loan. So how do we make sure that, like, I would prefer seeing an extension of that loan, because really the extension is for another full year, than a new document?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think everybody, including what I'm believing is Admin's perspective, thought this was a new loan. So I'm a little confused as to are we, are we, should we extend what's already there, or should we look at what document we have now, which creates something new?
So he basically said, do we need to extend what previously was approved when it came to the short-term loan, rather than conduct a whole new document as we have in front of us, the resolution?
That would be the, don't have to, no, but that would be the preferred method, but it needs to be done probably before July 1, because the previous resolution is June 30, and they would be late. If we go with the current resolution and have some bad fund numbers on it, it was not changed to Fund 1 instead of 110, but we will, depending on your answers, I'll get there.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I would prefer kicking this to the next meeting on the 24th, just because in the resolution it talks about decreasing general fund and putting it in certain buckets, and I just see this as a secondary loan, even though it's not meant to be, the way it's written, I don't, if we follow the instructions that's on here, it's an additional $2 million, hence why I think most people thought that's what we were looking at today. So I'd love to see this be reviewed and cleaned up and brought back to us in the appropriate documentation, so.
Steven?
So I do see two solutions, either the board is okay with the department missing the deadline of the June 30 payment via the resolution, and coming back on July 8 with an extension, or we can move forward with this one, and what we would do is, we would pay them the $2 million and they would pay the old loan off. Same end result, but, because it would be net zero. So those are the two different options. They both work, just one is a little roundabout.
And so, but the second one, we wouldn't miss the deadline?
Correct.
The other way, we would miss the deadline?
Correct.
All right. How does everyone feel about that?
I'm okay with the, the second one, or the, where we don't miss the deadline.
The first one?
First one, I guess, I'm confused.
And then come back and fix it? Or, I'm sorry, not come back and fix it, pay it.
Pay it, net zero.
It appears that in the item, there's an incorrect, there's a clerical error, so if your board were to approve that, it would have to be as amended, I believe?
Yeah. I'm okay with approving it as amended.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So last time the extension came, I voted against it, I, 12 months is, in my opinion, $2 million from general funds, I, I'm, I can't continue with this.
All right. No other comments, I'll open it up to the public?
No.
We have one right here.
Hi, Elaine Brown, just wondering, oh, three things, maybe this is what you want oversight on, what are the services provided for that $2 million? Is that designated, how the money is getting back into the system, and who's the oversight on that?
All right. Do you want to answer some of that?
Yes, so primarily the $2 million is used to cover contracted services within the specialty mental health program. So that includes things like our, all of our medical psychiatrists, all of our nursing services, they're very expensive, and we have direct oversight from the Department of Healthcare Services to provide those services, as well as the Auditor Controller to ensure that all of our bills are paid, and our math maths, as well as the Administrator's Office, Stephen Carter. So we have full transparency in all of our books, and anybody is welcome to come through and look any time at how we account for our dollars.
All right. No one else on Zoom or anything? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
So I would offer the resolution as amended with those mistakes.
Yes, and so for, as part of that motion, the amendments would be any reference to the Fund Number 110, and after the now-therefore paragraph in the resolution that's posted, for your board is changed to, or revised to Fund 1, and that would be the amendment for offering the resolution as amended.
Offered with that language.
And that's also with the caveat that once the funds are given, they balance out, and then, something like that?
That's my understanding, yes.
Just making sure. All right, resolution's been offered.
All right. Supervisor Owen?
Nay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Rosmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right, motion passes, three to two?
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't? It needs a four to one, right?
Yes.
All right, so motion doesn't pass for, it needs a four to one, so what happens from here, Lloyd?
Well, no action is then taken by your board, so the resolution is not adopted.
All right, so the resolution fails.
So and which critical services are not going to be funded now?
Um, our contracted providers of nursing services.
And are we going to be in violation of those contracts?
I don't know, I'd have to do a further analysis at this point to determine what our options are.
How many people are going to be impacted?
I am not sure, I couldn't state definitively.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So again, there is no, not moving forward, I'm just, this is not clean. Is it possible dur- Is it possible during the Behavioral Health Budget item to show us what is the plan to recoup? Because what I have is mostly those dollars cannot go back to be paid back for the loan. It goes back into the programs. And I don't have an understanding of how the $2 million will be paid back at this point in time. Is it possible to have that presentation on the, during the budget time?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
I'm not quite sure how you're going to get the money back.
So the way that we've been paying it back. It's just that those, the cash flow of Medi-Cal reimbursement and revenue is slower than anticipated, because we must contribute a significant portion of what we make into the intergovernmental transfer process in order to draw down more Medi-Cal revenue. And because we receive some of the highest Medi-Cal reimbursement rates in the state, that was a significant burden in order to pony up the matching funds for those services. So I don't see this issue continuing into the next fiscal year. I believe that this will conclude that. And yes, of course, I am happy to present to your board regarding all of our finances on the 24th.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So if it, if it did come back in front of us, would there be an opportunity to? No, it's, okay.
That's why, that's why I was here is that.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Sorry, that's why I was back up at the podium, god damn. That's why I was back at the, up at the podium, is there's no other chance for it to come through, because it's a resolution. And let's decide to allow one during budget hearings, which is not common.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I, I'd like to offer a solution. I'll do a three-month extension, but we need to have a conversation. These services are great, but if they're going to start hitting us in general funds and the federal and the state government are going to keep cutting as we anticipate them to finalize and cut, we have to have a plan. And so within the next three months, I would like to see a Health and Human Services conversation about what are the mandated programs, what are the not mandated programs, so we can come up with a plan, not to eliminate programs, but so we can be prepared and we can know what to do. I think this is, this, this is an impossible thing to just say no to, but to ask for 12 more months of general funds to be tied up and to not have been provided a plan when we've extended the loan, I don't, that, there's a level of discomfort that I have. And I think that I can find comfort if we do a three-month extension with a deep dive conversation with our Health and Human Services about what is coming up. And by that point in time, things will have been more finalized. And either I need to stop talking the way I'm talking, because they're not going to be as bad as they are. But there will be cuts that come down the pike. And we cannot keep thinking that we can do business as usual. I'm nervous about that.
Stephen, who did you come back for?
So my question there would be, do you want an open session with all three department heads here? Or talk to Admin to work out what that would look like?
I would say you guys could figure out what the best platform would be, but I think it needs to be a, a platform for a public conversation. People who are on these services and programs are probably really nervous not to know what, what we're planning or what we may have going for us. But I think that showing that we have a plan, at least on the shelf, may alleviate some of the issues that people are going through and their concerns.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, Director Jones, you mentioned that you thought this would be resolved this year and that this isn't going to continue. So can you just elaborate more on that?
Well, my anticipation is that we would have been able to pay off the remaining 2 million when the Medi-Cal payments resume in about the late August, early September. Typically, what we see on our transfer up of intergovernmental transfer funds and what we get back is it's about a few dollars for every dollar. It's that the flow of it is too slow. And in order to keep it moving, you have to keep feeding the monster. And so we're slowly inch by inch, also trying to stock up our reserves while still maintaining service continuity. For example, the mobile crisis benefit, which is significant. All of our expanded services and our dramatic push to increase services is behind this, and that was an intentional choice that we made. And I do not anticipate, I think that we will have resolved our IGT cash flow issues after this and will not have any more need to go before the board. Now, I understand that the state budget was approved, and a lot of the cuts that were discussed did not go through relating to healthcare. It is also true that many of the services that we provide are not being contested for payment. A lot of waivers with the government for Medi-Cal services are maybe not going to be renewed. We don't know, yet it remains to be seen. But the core behavioral health services will continue. So in the absence of state funding for programming, our most non-essential services, if we were short, would be shuttered. So those are the peer support centers. Other outreach and engagement activities that are not funded through Medi-Cal would not be prioritized with our funding.
Thank you.
Supervisor Owen.
And it sounds, by pushing it three months out, it sounds like you're probably not going to need it at that point as you're anticipating being able to pay it back at that point. So that would get you through the crisis, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's a solution, perfect.
Did you, no?
Well, it's not up to us to reconsider.
No? Lloyd?
So if your board is willing to entertain a reconsideration of what, of the action or non-approval that took place, we have Rule 9 of your, of Chapter 1 of the Policies and Procedures, in which any member of the board who votes in the majority on a quest, on a question, so there was three who voted in the majority, as well as any member who was absent, that doesn't apply here, is eligible to make a motion to reconsider. And then a motion to reconsider shall be in order during the meeting at which the action to be reconsidered took place. That's the same meeting that we have here, provided all members are in public, all members of the public are still in attendance. The session, this item is still open for your board, hasn't been closed, during the original action and are still present in the board chamber. So roll through reconsideration is an option available to your board. Anyone who voted in the majority may make that motion, and then we'll go from there as far as any actions that would flow from, from that motion.
I move to reconsider.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lloyd?
So now, with this reconsideration item, what's before your board today is a resolution. And there was a proposal to amend the resolution by revising references to Fund, to quote-unquote Fund Number, oh, no, quote-unquote 110, the Fund Number 21. That is, so if there are any other amendments your board may wish to consider for purposes of this resolution, and I'm alluding or I'm referencing this three-month extension. If any, any other amendments that your board may wish to incorporate in this resolution, your board has the option to do so. And, and the resolution, again, can be offered as amendment with these latest round of amendments.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So I just, even the resolution, I don't see a timeline within the resolution itself. Am I missing that? I see dollars, I see the date of the regular meeting, it's being held, but I don't see that it said a year. But this is not an extension, because this is a new resolution. So what I'm offering is now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, that the following revisions to the fiscal year 2025 adopted budget are hereby authorized and approved. And I guess underneath that, funding, funding loan will be repaid within 90 days. What, help me correct that.
It'd be August, October 1st.
It would be September 17th, which would be past August.
It expires the first of the month, right? So if you expend it by 90 days?
Well, this is a brand-new one. The other one's going to fall off and go where it goes. And this one will be the new one that starts as of the 17th and for three months. Is that appropriate language?
Yes, and your board, the only suggestion here is to, again, clarify which language to plug in after that "now therefore" paragraph.
And that, I, I guess I'm looking to County Council to make sure and clarify, to make sure that is the appropriate language, that the loan repayment will be made in full within 90 days.
So it could be, the language could state that the loan repayment under this resolution shall be, shall be paid within 90 days of the adoption of this resolution?
Sounds good to me. And then we're going to need to change the fund numbers again to 110 to 1?
Yes, that'll be part of the amendment.
So that's another, those two amendments are the only ones that I think are necessary, and I will give it an approval. I offer the resolution as amended.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rosmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. Resolution has passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine.
Next, we'll move on to 7.3, consideration and discussion of the Public Defender Oversight Committee membership, and B, consideration of appointment of committee members. And Mr. Buenaventura?
Good afternoon, members of the board. First, I want to thank you all for the really nice, kind and considerate note that you all signed when I had to leave the country for my, my father's funeral. I really appreciate it, it really, it eased the, what I was going through tremendously. And I felt very, very, it was very kind of you, so thank you. I think we are ready to move forward with the Oversight Committee. This is obviously something that you, the board members and the past members have contemplated. I think you have some very fine candidates before you. I am ready to move forward with meeting quarterly. So I expect that as soon as you get your candidates selected, that July will be the first meeting, every quarter, that's the third quarter. And then I expect the, the next meeting after that will be in October. So at least initially, that's the, the contemplation is to do quarterly meetings, logistics of which we'll still have to work out, where they're going to be, how everyone's going to get notified, and the process that we're going to undertake. But I'm ready to move forward, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the process, but I defer up to you to select the members you think is appropriate. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I have a few concerns in researching this. The one recommended action regarding removing the CAO and adding the Chief Public Defender would make him a voting member of the Oversight Committee that's providing oversight for the Public Defender's Office. So I, I think, to me, that's concerning to have the Chief Public Defender as a voting member of oversight for their own committee. So I would propose on that part, I want to, I would like to give a solution to move forward partially in that the board here could, we can go ahead and appoint our two public members. We already have two supervisors appointed. We can go ahead and consider an appointment of the attorney position. Then the, the last member, aside from the CAO, would be the court non-voting member. And then that committee, because these bylaws also should be updated. These were from '05, when we operated under a different model. So that, that would be a majority of the committee, they could go ahead and meet and then be tasked with updating these bylaws to bring them back to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation on how we, we proceed with that other member that was the CAO here. I'm in support of it not having the CAO on there, but I think let's have the committee go forward and make recommendations on that. And then as far as the public members go, this has come up before, there's two of them that are full-time county employees that have applied. And in particularly, they work for a department that very likely would be interacting with public defender clients. So this has come up before under, I believe it's Rule 4 that we have about potentially not appointing people that are already employed by the county full-time. And then lastly, I believe there's conflicts, or there's going to be a conflict, with the application from Mr. O'Day in the future. And I was advised that he was most likely going to withdraw because of.
I have a document that says that.
So that is beneficial, okay. And then other than that, I also looked and talked to Mr. Hartman and looked at his application, although he has a few clients remaining, he is retiring, he's trying to wrap those up. And, you know, I would support him for, for that position. Those are my comments at this point.
Thank you. And I think Helen, you were first, and then Supervisor Sabatier, I see yours up to.
I think he was before, but I think he was.
It was a leftover.
Okay. I have some questions, I was just getting them together, because I had them on my, on the last time this came up. So let me see, what number was this again?
7.3?
7.3, okay, because I had to go to the other agenda where I had those comments. So how long was this process open for the, for the people to be on this? When did the process open? When, when did you start taking applications for the Oversight Committee? When?
Johanna, do you?
How long has it been open for the Oversight Committee?
It's been open, I believe, since the least January is my recollection, or sometime first of the year. It's been quite some time.
I know it's been quite some time, but I think that there was people that filled out applications a while back when it first opened up, and there, I don't see them on there. That's what I'm getting at. So I was wondering what happened to those applications. I know we didn't, but I think that it had opened up a while back. So I was wondering about those application.
Do you mind if I sit down?
Yes.
All right.
You're welcome to come up here.
You want to sit up here?
How many are on the committee?
There's.
Seven.
There's six voting members and one non-voting member, so seven total. Two, two members of the community, one.
I believe we started taking applications in 2023, but we didn't have a public defender at the time, which kind of stalled forming.
So did the, what happened to those applications?
Well, just from my recollection also, when we have committees that don't follow through or that don't end up getting seated, the reason I know is because I have free town halls, this happens all the time. They end up opening it up again, and then folks would be expected to reapply.
Reapply, so they don't, they don't save those applications and bring them forward?
From what I understand, a lot of times that's happening, and I've had to have them either refill out or something like. That's, that's from what I remember.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I don't know if it's similar to this.
Because somebody asked me.
Well, okay, so it's hard for us in the clerk's office to know if someone would still be interested. So when we have applications from so long ago, we encourage people to reapply when we re-put out that the, the board is open, so then that we can know that they're still interested. Because we could, we could get applications and put them on, and the person says, oh, I'm not interested anymore, it's been two years, I've moved, or et cetera, so.
Okay.
But we can always, like, if, if someone didn't get their application on, we can always continue it and find, or they can reapply, and we can put it back on the agenda. It's never an issue to not have everybody, like, put their application in.
Okay, and is there any applications, how many were turned in total for it? Was there any that were pulled out that are, that we do not see? That, for, whether it be vetting or if they were somehow chosen not to be put on?
Let me check and laser fish, one moment.
While you're checking, Supervisor Sabatier, did you want to?
I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, is it possible to, because I, I get the whole, I, I don't know that I want to see CAO spending time on this. I'd rather see somebody, or at least your designee, somebody who has a little bit more experience and understanding of the public defenders, maybe the court system. Is that something that County Council can be asked to be a part of? Is that legit as far as a request, so that it doesn't have a conflict of interest?
So my office can certainly take that under review. That seems, for purposes of this board item, that seems to speak to the composition of the committees. So direction can certainly be provided to, from your board.
Of the committees, so direction can certainly be provided to uh from your board to staff to determine the appropriate composition of the of this uh committee of this oversight board. Uh moving forward and that may be done in conjunction with um the anticipated uh amendment or revisions to the bylaws. Which more and more often than not, they would include the composition.
Right.
Of the members of this of this board.
I had actually thought about that same idea, but I it also seems to me that it might be. Not the best idea to have county councils since they are the attorney for the county and they have to represent. You know, potentially any issues down the road with any of any of our advisory committees. So that's why I kind of abandoned that thought after looking at it, but. I think that, you know, it's it would be good work for the the committee that we can appoint to bring us back ideas on who could replace the C A O.
What about a volunteer that volunteers at county council? Just thinking out loud. Um I I believe we have two supervisors already. Chair Crandall, I believe you're one of the supervisors. Who's the second?
Me.
Okay. I I don't think we need to change that, so I think that's already on our um thing. I am very interested with a little condition for Mitchell Hartman as soon as he has depleted his caseload. Um and has proven that he no longer has a caseload. I think he would be a good addition uh to that. Uh and I also wanted to speak highly on Mary Wilson. Uh she has been very adamant since probably twenty twenty-three, if not a little later. Uh to be on this and I think that her uh expertise, knowledge and uh life pursuits are perfect for this type of board. Um I'll leave the rest open for other suggestions. Vice Chair.
I did want to suggest Mark Byes was uh an applicant that I thought would be a good candidate for this. He's got experience. He's a. Professor at the one of the local colleges. He's been on the grand jury. Um I believe he's he's currently in law school.
Okay.
So I think he's one that I would like to see on there too.
So there would be.
I have no concern about Mary.
So there's two publics. It would be Mark and then, okay. All right. I I'm agreement with both of those and Mitchell. I didn't know.
I I would still like to um know how many applications there were total and what applications we didn't get to see. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay, so the press release was sent March fifth. And we were accepting applications until, yeah, uh well, we've been accepting applications since March, but. The ones that we received from two thousand and three, we didn't include on this agenda because it's been two years and. We sent out the press release um for people to apply now that it's up and running and such. But we can continue if there are people interested.
Okay. And how many did was this all of them that we received? Okay, so there was none none. So they weren't vetted?
No, we weren't. We don't vet them.
Okay. That's what I was checking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This not from two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to speak on uh this item or any of the candidates. Hearing none, I'll bring you back to the board for action. I'm in agreement with the with what. So do you want to make? Anyone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll take an attempt at a motion. I'll move. That we appoint uh Mark Byes and Mary Wilson as the two uh committee members from the public. I'll move that we um appoint Mitch Hartman on condition of him wrapping up his clients. And then that we um. We don't uh take action on the or we. We don't take action on the replacing the C A O with the chief public defender at this time until such time that. The committee brings back recommendations on bylaw updates.
Lloyd.
So as far as the uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, the uh the motion appointment language um that can stay in place as far as the appointments of. Uh Mark Byes, uh Mary Wilson as uh.
Public.
Were the two members of the general public and uh Mitchell Hartman as the uh one of the attorney appointments. Um under the condition to wrap up.
Right.
The caseload that may be in conflict um with uh with the functions of of the membership appointment under this uh by the oversight board. So that would be the the motion for appointments and then like could follow that out after your board takes action.
That's so moved for.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
As far as the second uh second form or recommend uh recommendation, um your board could direct staff to uh. Along with this oversight board, uh in coordination with the oversight board, to revise the bylaws. Uh to come uh to present to the board revisions to the bylaws that may include um changes to the compositions. To of the in particular, the one county administrative officer position uh membership for this oversight board.
So I'm good with providing direction to staff on that. All right.
So just direct direction right there.
That can be by consensus.
Consensus. I think we have it. Sounds like we have it. All right. With that, that that should, oh, go ahead Supervisor.
Just one question. Are these public meetings?
So that's you're asking me?
I'm I'm asking whoever can answer. Are these public meetings or is there confidential uh statements that will be made during these public defender oversight meetings?
That's the concern that I had. Yes, the confidentiality of it, but also um. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Some of the things that cross my mind are things like is is this a sort of closed meeting? Not open to the public? Is it a televised meeting? Is it a meeting that's covered by the Brown Act? Um and so these are and is it a meeting that I should facilitate or am I just a a participant meeting? I I'm a presenter? And so all those things, I think the the committee is gonna have to hash out and that's why I think uh it's time that we all get together, at least the committee gets together and and decides how we're gonna proceed.
Good answer.
Under the current bylaws, I believe they are public meetings. It says they shall be held in compliance with the Brown Act.
Yeah.
In the bylaws, so.
I I would suspect it's general information and numbers, not specific court cases and things like that.
Correct.
Okay. All right. We're good, I think, or all right. Thank you.
If I could just, and again, this is just a suggestion and I defer to you obviously as the board members, but. Perhaps one consideration you could have is you could include me still, but as a non-voting member. And so uh I'm just throwing that out there as something to consider and because I would very much like to be part of the discussion. And if I'm just left to be a presenter, I'm maybe my input is not gonna be uh. I'm not gonna be as present if I wasn't a member. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I I think certainly that's gonna be part of the discussions on the bylaw updates as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Next is our seven point eight. We have a consideration of change order number one to the construction contract with Weeks Drilling and Pump Co- Company. For the Spring Valley test wells in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for a total contract amount of two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred dollars and authorize. The administrator to sign the contracts, Robin Foray, the special district administrator.
Good afternoon, board. I'm Robin Foray, your special district administrator. On this item before you was continued from last week and um thank you to the clerk's office for adding some additional information to the report. Um the original contract was to drill down to three hundred feet for a total of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Um due to what the engineers and the well drillers discovered when they were drilling, um we pushed forward and drilled down to about five hundred and sixty feet. Um and that is hence the the change order amount is for the additional drilling, the additional reaming, the um lining of the well, the screening, all of that additional footage. Um during the drilling, they first hit a smaller aquifer towards the top within the three hundred feet. Um and then they drilled through some rock that continued to produce more water. And then they hit at like five hundred and sixty feet, they stopped because they'd hit yet another aquifer. And so they've been working on it, um putting the casing in, the screening, pumping some of the when they they had to dig it with some mud and stuff, so. They've been pumping that out. Um originally, they thought it was gonna be about two hundred gallons per minute and they are now estimating it to be closer to three hundred that three hundred gallons per minute. Which is extremely exceptional for this area. And the current water plant is um produces about a hundred and ninety gallons a minute. So this is significantly increasing the water sources in Spring Valley. Um and we are, we have a grant for this project that's fully funded. In addition, it's also a state mandate that we have a secondary on water source for Spring Valley. So this is a huge win for Spring Valley and we are very excited about being able to get a well that um. Will produce more than the water plant and a secondary water source. And so we are asking for approval of the change order. Um in addition, we will be going out to bid to retrofit the well well, which, you know, put the pump in and all of that stuff. Um they're um pumping the rest of the the mud and stuff out of the well right now. Um and then we'll um calculate what the gallon actual gallons per minute they expect to be so that then they can retrofit it correctly. Um and they'll be testing the water. Um currently, they expect by the sight, smell, color of the water for it to be a high-quality water. And so um that's the item before you is to approve the change order and then the retrofit will come back after we solicit bids for that.
Thank you. Um any comments on this?
No, I just want to say awesome. Thank you. We're so excited about this.
Yes. Supervisor Sabatier.
Uh just a brief question. This was only the testing uh to drill and create it, but the use of it, will there be some sort of environmental uh. Review on the impact of the draw to surrounding areas if there's other wells? Just the.
Um due to the nature of what it is, the it's an exempt from um any sequo and it's on our existing property. Um and the test well, everybody calls it a test well, but everybody hopes it's a production well. Um because you don't know what you're gonna get when you drill a test well. So um it will be the they're gonna use the exact same hole and the same lining and everything that they're putting in now.
All right. I'm gonna open it up to the public for anyone that would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone on Zoom? All right. I'll bring you back to the board for action.
I'm Mr. Chair. I'll move to award change order number one to the construction contract. With Weeks Drilling and Pump Company for the Spring Valley test wells in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred. And authorize the administrator of special districts to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, just to add a clarification, it would also in that would also include the approval of said of said change order, not just the award.
So moved as modified.
And still second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much for that, Robin. All right. Next, we will move on to our seven point six. Consideration of a letter of support for the County of Lake's Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning and Demonstration Grant Application. Public Works Director Glenn March. All right, go ahead. Think so. Is it? Oh, yeah, you had to press the button.
Okay. Good afternoon, uh Chair Crandall and members of the board. Uh my name is Glenn March. I'm the Public Works Director here. I'd like to introduce David Bingham, who has been with the county for eighteen years. He was recently promoted to capital project manager. And he will be uh David and I will be working together on completing the S S four A grant. Um so the S S four A grant is a safety grant. Which is a U S D O T safety grant. So when we think about buckets of money for roads. We think of highway bridge program funds, state transportation improvement program funds. Our H U D A and our S B one funds, but safety program, the safety project funds are two large uh buckets of money. So. Currently, um we are eligible for. California Highway Safety Improvement Program Funds. Uh and we have those funds funding two projects right now. We are not eligible for. Our safes, the federal safe streets and roads for all funds. So David is gonna get into that and tell you about our L S R P and what we're up to working with Lake A P C.
Good afternoon. Um so back in twenty twenty-two, um the county um established a local roads um safety plan, the L R L R S P. Uh it's basically a safety action plan. And the it was mostly in order to be able to continue to qualify for these highway safety improvement funds. Um we were mandated that we needed to have one in place in order to to get any further applications for that funding. Um so we that was established. Um we got additional H sub funding through that. The S S four A um grant, the there are two kinds. There's the implementation and or excuse me, the planning and demonstration grants and then the implementation grants. So we're we're going to be applying with with your permission for uh the implementation or excuse me, the uh planning and demonstration, not the implementation. So we are not eligible to apply for the implementation grants until we have a safety action plan that meets this grant program eligibility requirements. So the Lake A P C has um recently um been awarded a a grant through the S S four A to update. Our L R S P as well as the the city of uh Lakeport and uh city of Clear Lake. To a level that is an eligible safety action plan through the S S four A grant program. So our grant application that we would like to submit would further develop and inform that local road safety plan. To provide some some safety analysis corridor studies of of high-risk road areas where we've got fatalities and serious injuries in the county. Um as well as um there was a a demonstration project that that we would like to um establish in the Lucerne area to. Kind of change some of the traffic patterns that will uh further um inform the the L R S P updates. Um and. We will be identifying uh future projects to list within the L R S P. As the the safety, the safe streets and roads for all uh grant program. When you try to achieve the implementation funding through them, you have to have those projects that you're um going after the implementation dollars. Within your safety action plan already. So the idea would be to develop these corridor studies to identify. Future safety projects to include in their L R S P so that we can further, you know, in the next couple of years. Be applying for implementation grants to actually put these projects on the street.
All right.
Just real quickly, um. With this um Lake A P C update, all these projects will be included. But we are going to use our grant funding to further develop these corridor studies so we can get. Good estimates, uh better scopes of work and calculate benefit cost ratios. Uh the feds look at benefit cost ratios um when they award contracts. So. In the past, they've uh just um made a cutoff line of a benefit cost ratio around four. Anything below four would not. Receive a grant and anything above four would. So uh we have a history of not uh estimating projects well. At a very, very conceptual stage. So what we plan to do is uh develop these to a ten percent fifteen percent conceptual stage so we. Have better cost estimates and we can be more uh accurate with our grant requests during the implement for design and construction, which is the implementation phase.
Supervisor Pyska.
So thi- this is the grant is for the planning. Is this for the rehabilitation or is that different than a safety corridor?
Um so uh this is different. So just like there are um. Money set aside for grants for uh pavement rehabilitation or active transportation projects. This is a separate bucket for uh safety projects federally funded. So we, most of the corridors have had fatalities or serious and or serious injuries on them. And as part of this. And as part of this S A, S S, S S four A grant process, we're committing to, to achieve a goal in the future of zero fatalities, zero severe injuries. So that's why we focus on these corridors where there have, have been fatalities and severe injuries.
Okay, I just bring it up because I think in the past, you mentioned that both the new Niss Lucerne Cut Off and Bottle Rock are artillery, artillery roads that really need attention and that you were looking for, to put out bids for those redesigns, or designs for the rehabilitation. So this is a different project?
Correct.
Okay.
We may typically, as part of a safety project, you would do pavement rehabilitation within the corridor. So most of those projects will requiring repaving of a corridor. So you find funding sources where you can to address multiple problems.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Owen and then Supervisor Sabatier.
First, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. David Bingham, for your promotion. And this is pretty exciting, be, be excited to be working with you on this. And I wanted to say thank you for getting Morgan Valley on there as that is a road that is absolutely failing, as we know. And I know that there's, I think there's some roads in your department too, in your area that are failing and, and there are huge safety issues. So putting those at the top of the list would be huge and really appreciate it, thank you. And I'm glad that you're going after some of these grants, that's, that's an improvement, so I, I appreciate that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to clarify the response to make sure I understood. This specifically with the roads listed, and I apologize, I didn't see, it was slapping me in the face. The roads listed within the memo, those are only, the money we're asking is to plan and design those roads, not for the actual implementation of the construction or whatever needs to happen.
So when we talk about planning, we're talking about developing 10% plans. So an implementation grant, which we are currently not eligible for, for these safety projects, they take the project through design and construction, so.
We're at the beginning, we're doing zero to 10?
Yes, zero to 10.
That's, that's just what I needed the clarification for, thank you.
All right.
I have one more question adding on to that. So I know that our original date for planning on Morgan Valley where the road is slipping down the canyon was May, so what are we looking at to get this road, this planning done to be able to get the road fixed?
So there's, currently I'm working with a geotechnical consultant who's gone out to the Morgan Valley last week to give us a geotechnical report on Morgan Valley. So hopefully within the next month, we'll have that geotechnical report and we'll have some temporary solutions to address that. And we also have a grant to construct a permanent solution.
Okay, and but no timeframe?
No timeframe.
All right, with that, we'll open it up to the public, is there anyone on Zoom? All right.
And if I can interrupt?
Go ahead.
We have to amend the letter with, take some corrections. We're going to amend the grant name as well as strike out the type here at the bottom.
Where is it now?
Strike out the what?
It says type here.
Got it.
Okay. Oh, I, okay, all right, and that's the only one? That's the only one?
So you mean change it to safe streets and roads, not safe roads and streets?
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the letter of support for the County of Lake Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning and Demonstration Grant Application as amended and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries, all right, thank you. Let's see, now we are at seven point one. Calendars, who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
I have no calendar.
No calendar, all right, who would like to go next?
I have to find mine.
Vice Chair.
Had Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council meeting last night. Thank you County Council for doing Brown Act training again. I plan to go to the city council meeting in Lakeport tonight. Tomorrow, I plan to attend the State Park General Plan Meeting online. On Thursday, I'll be back at the judge's breakfast to host guest, guest speakers. We'll have the healthcare in, it's called the Heart Hub now, but it's the Health Education Innovation Center through Sutter, speaking tomorrow. And then I do on, I'm sorry, Thursday, and then I also have a meeting with the Clear Lake Animal Association. Next Monday, a meeting with the, standing meeting with the Lakeport Mayor. And then I just wanted to bring attention to the board and the public that there's currently a provision in the Senate Energy Committee as part of the budget reconciliation that proposes to sell 250 million acres of federal land in the western United States with, with 16 million of those acres being in the state of California and many thousands of acres being in our county. And my review of the map, although it's not precise, I'm thinking we've got 75, 80,000 acres in Lake County that may be up for sale if this were to pass through the Senate and get into part of the budget. And they're trying to move, they're going to want to move quickly on that if it does get into the budget. Hopefully, it doesn't, you know, I've talked to our admin staff about checking with our consultants on it and I've also talked to our congressman's office about my concerns with that. That's the end of my report.
Is that Mendocino?
Yeah, that's part of the Mendocino National Forest and many thousands of acres of Bureau of Land Management land in our county.
Okay.
Both National Forest and B L M.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for bringing that up. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Lyme Foundation in the morning. The Clear Lake State Park General Plan is happening tomorrow, are you going to go to that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I don't know that I can because I also have a N A C O meeting. I've got a meeting in Kelseyville, you're coming to that, right? Okay, good.
Which one is?
The one at three o'clock, the Sasha?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, good. Thursday is a holiday, but I have two N A C O calls, so I'll be doing those. Friday, I've got a panel prep with N A C O, Coal Creek Advisory, are you going to that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then I'm going to be meeting with admin on, for, on budget. And Saturday, I will be at Middletown Days. Monday, I have my meeting with C A O. Parker. Okay.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question? Was Juan B. canceled on Friday? Because I know I can't make it.
Yeah, I mean, I told them I wasn't able to make it unless they really didn't have a quorum and I just can't make it and I didn't think it was appropriate for all of us to, you know, to just barely have a quorum anyway, so, yeah, it just disappeared.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I gave my six, six-month overview at the Middletown Area Plan, or Middletown Area Town Hall on Thursday. I also did my C T A training, which is our certified tourism ambassador, so I'm a certified tourism ambassador for Lake County. I think our splash pad meeting is going to be rescheduled for this week, correct? Is that correct?
Still, no, still unknown.
Still unknown, but it's not scheduled for, I think it's Thursday. So let me see, Lower Lake Action Group Dinner is coming up this week, I didn't write down dates, Caliomy Water Board. I have an event at the ranch at C P, at 6:00 P. M., I think that's on Thursday. Middletown Days is this weekend, I think, believe it's Friday through Sunday. I'm going to be going in the parade on Saturday with our, our Monica Rosenthal, which is our planning department director or? Commissioner, thank you. And so I think that's it.
All right. I actually ended up going out to Lake Pillsbury on Friday. I swore in one of the board members from the fire, the Lake Pillsbury Fire District and actually went back on, on a boat with them. They showed me again some different things when it comes to the dam. The dam was, you know, all of the, you know, all they were, they were lowered, so it was a lot of water coming out and, yeah, it was just, it's one of those things to get another look at it while we're discussing it heavily during this timeframe. Went through some of the community to see the cabins and whatnot, things like that. There was two landings, we seen some planes land, I've never seen a plane land there, just use the water, so it was pretty cool. Tomorrow, we got worth in the evening for the town hall. Thursday, I have the law library. Friday, I have a meeting with the State Treasurer's Office. And then back here on Monday with the C A O. meeting and back to the board for budgets, right? Starting the 23rd, and that's it. So from there, we will go into closed session. Closed session consists of eight point one, public employee evaluation, special districts administrator, eight point two, public employee dismissal release, eight point three, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two E one, one potential case. And with that, we'll go into closed session, all right, we'll see you.